To the April 16th special meeting of the Bronxville Planning Board, I'm Michael Goldman, and we're here tonight to review a new topic for us, on-street dining. On-street dining was permitted by the village during the COVID pandemic, and fortunately, we're in better days on that front. And recently, the Board of Trustees of the village passed a resolution permitting a more limited scope of on-street dining on a go-forward basis. And the board has tasked the planning board here with reviewing applications from the various restaurants that currently have on-street dining regarding their proposed new configuration for the on-street dining. So we're looking forward to hearing from the various applicants and seeing how we can move this forward. So I think the first item on our agenda is the application from Underhill's Crossing. Do we have someone here to speak on behalf of Underhill's?
Speaking of Underhill's, we have a guy here.
Would you, should we swap around if that's okay?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, I'm sorry?
Why don't we go to Il Bacchio?
Okay, why don't we skip to Il Bacchio out of order if that's okay? If Il Bacchio's ready to speak to their application, please, if you'd go to the mic and identify yourself and tell us what we have going here.
Yes, hi, my name is Peter, my last name is Diana, just like a girl's first name. And we would like to keep everything as is, but what are we proposing instead?
The proposal for Il Bacchio is-
We know who you are, but if you can identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm Maggie Marone, architect.
Yeah.
They have reduced, they have two parking spaces existing, and they'd be going down to one parking space, which would only allow them to have two tables and eight chairs, but they still would rather go ahead and do it because they do, people really enjoy the outdoor dining there.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty much using the same materials they have now. They had just put in a new awning and everything about, I don't know, six months ago.
Mm-hmm.
So this would be basically cutting it in half and using the same things. They will put the bollards around the outside as the town is requesting.
Okay.
And planters.
And this would be seasonal, it would go up, I don't know what Paul, the schedule is for that, but it would be-
Seasonal, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Wood floor, planters, I mean, pretty much similar, very similar to what it is now, but just in half.
Now, Il Bacchio already has some outdoor dining along the sidewalk, correct?
We have five seats, six seats.
Mm-hmm.
And we would like to keep the streets as well.
Yeah, my understanding is there'll be a separate application process for that that we'll, that we'll be getting to in the future, but I assume, Jim, there'll be, or Paul, they'll be maintaining those in the meantime while we, tonight, we're only considering, I think, the on-street aspects. Why don't we throw it open for questions from board members about the plans from Il Bacchio?
Where does this sit in terms of the number of parking spaces that would be occupied?
So there, it's going to be outside of their front door, starting kind of where their front door is and going back towards the train tracks that way. So it won't be overlapping, it's only over, on top, in front of their building itself. And they're giving up the parking space, which is behind, to the left.
And so it sits within two, parallel?
Just one, yeah, it's just going to be one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And is the parking spot in the front, is that still that sort of loading area in front of Lang's, is that?
No, we don't, that's, that's separate, that's in front, to the right of it.
To the right, right.
Yes. This is only taking one space.
Okay. So it sounds like you've been trying to work within the guidance that the trustees gave of, you know, trying to shrink the footprint from what it had been at the peak of COVID on these.
We would love to keep both of them.
Understood.
We have to make a choice.
Right. No, we appreciate that.
We would like to continue because it's, people love it, you know.
Yeah. A night like tonight, yes.
Yes.
Other questions from the board? If there are none, I'd propose to open up the public meeting in case anyone from the public has any comments that they'd want to make about this application. Please, if you could come to the mic.
Is it a procedure or application?
Yeah, we're going to-
They charge for all four.
In other words, we're going to, for each application, give folks not opportunity to comment.
So are we able to comment on all four of them at the end?
If you have a comment, you might be better served by going ahead and providing it because we're going to take action one by one on these. So if you want us to understand your perspective, now would be a better time. Please, just identify yourself and let us know your thoughts.
Evening and thank you. My name is Matt Craig, I'm a Bronxville resident, my family is as well. I have a fourth grader in the school across the street, we've lived here for several years. I'd like to tell you that I have no financial interest in any of the four businesses that have proposals before you tonight. I'd also like to let you know that I've been an instructor of urban planning and design for master's candidates at New York Institute of Technology. Suffice to say, I know some things about urban planning. Now, this is in relation to Il Bacchio, but it's going to be the same thing for La Casa, it's going to be the same thing for Pizza, it's going to be the same thing for Underhill's Crossing, and my family has dined in all of these establishments. There are three things that I'd like to address. When you reduce the outdoor space of these restaurants, you're going to reduce the revenue in which they bring to the village, their boon to the village. You will also, in the process, inadvertently wind up being partially responsible for these establishments laying off their employees because they can't handle those loads. That's number one. Number two, from the urban standpoint, urban planning standpoint, what actually happens is when you have people in a vibrant dining scene and they're enjoying themselves, people come here, it's a magnet for the town. And even though we're talking about these four businesses tonight, what actually happens is other businesses benefit from their presence and you, you receive increased tax revenue, more so than you would from clawing back those parking spaces. Urban centers thrive when people are utilizing them in an interpersonal way. What this outdoor dining does for the village is phenomenal. If you reduce it or eliminate it, you will take something away. Now, I understand, we're all here for the school, but this is a value-added benefit for the town. Make no mistake, every town that has a vibrant dining scene and every city that has a vibrant dining scene benefits financially. It's good for everybody. Okay? And now, the third thing that I would like to address is, we'll call it the public safety aspect of this. I don't care how many 25 mile-an-hour speed signs the village posts, people abuse that, they speed, they do U-turns, they do it everywhere. This is not an anti-police crusade, right? We love the police. What this is, is when you have vibrant dining scene and you have street dining, people slow down in pedestrian areas. I don't know anybody in this country who's not for public safety. So by having these four restaurants have their outdoor spaces, it slows people down in vehicular traffic in our urban center. And we all know what's happened on Craft Avenue with people who come in and joyride, that's a problem. But it doesn't happen on Park Place, it doesn't happen on Pond Field, that's a fact. Now, one of the other things, and I'm sure it's going to come up, is cleanliness. I don't know a single one of these four businesses that is not overly responsible for their outdoor area. And so in certain cases, some of them actually take care of their neighbors' outdoor areas. You will not find trash from any one of these restaurants. I dare you to find it. But you know where you will find trash? From Starbucks, from Cookies and Cream, and from Haagen-Dazs. Now, how do I know this? Because yours truly cleans up the parking lot on Craft when everybody transits to town and decides not to use a garbage receptacle. So I am in very much favor of having all of these establishments continue their outdoor seating, not having it reduced, and I'd encourage you to find a plan to allow it to happen year round. I know the reasons why you don't want to, but it's a boon for Bronxville. And when we have this kind of thriving scene, more people will want to be here. People will pay whatever they want to be to live in Bronxville, we all have. However, property values will continue to increase if this is a magnet destination for all of Westchester. And if you roll it back to what this was before COVID, outdoor dining is going to end and it will be a quiet sleeping village, quiet sleepy village again, and you'll lose all that tax revenue. People will lose their jobs, will, will lose the thing that we've come to love. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Okay, is there someone else from the public who would like to speak? Please.
My name's Mark Davis, Bronxville resident, and I guess I have a little bit, I wouldn't say opposing view, but a different view. The issue with the downtown, I think, always has been and probably will be lack of parking spaces. And I guess I have questions really more on the process, maybe this isn't the right, you know, time for, but to me, you're taking a valuable public resource and giving it to a private entity. And I'm just not sure of what the process is. For example, if I'm Walmress and I want to use the parking spot in front, can I, you know, essentially buy that parking space or rent that parking space from the village? The traffic downtown is just gotten to be a nightmare. You have people crossing the double yellow line on Palmer Park Place at night with people double parking and delivery trucks and, you know, the delivery drivers. It is a complete zoo. And at the end of the day, a lot of this just boils down to people can't find a spot to park. And to take these spots and basically use them up for the entire year doesn't make any sense to me. I think absolutely when COVID hit, what people did was, was right, but I really don't understand why one group of, you know, Bronxville merchants is essentially benefiting another because I'm losing parking spots for my customers. And people aren't coming into town because you drive around and around, God forbid, you find a spot and forget to put a quarter in the meter, then it's $25. But that's, you know, so it's just, at, at the end of the day, what I'm sort of worried about is that we're confusing really a vibrant dining scene, and it is nice when it's beautiful out, with really a vibrant downtown, because this really doesn't solve the fundamental issue that we have, and that's lack of parking. The other point I'd like to make is I'm not sure sort of how this was priced out, but the way that, and I think I have the right numbers, I may not, but basically for six months out of the year, I think it works out to be about, I can't remember what it was. Anyhow, on a square foot basis, it's about $4.80 a square foot. And I have no idea what commercial space runs for in Bronxville, but I think it's probably a lot higher than $4.80. So it's just, again, I don't think it's fair to take basically what is a public good and allocate it to the benefit of a limited number of, you know, merchants in town when it's going to detrimentally hurt the other ones. And if you're going to do this, maybe you open it up and have an RFP. You know, it's just, if you want the space, this is what it's going to cost, or put in your best bid.
Okay. I think there'll be a response that we'll put together in one sec, just I wanted to see if there was anyone else from the public who-
Thank you very much.
-wanted to speak, and then I think there's a thought in terms of how we proceed. Please, come on up.
I had no intention of speaking, so forgive me, I don't think I'll be nearly as eloquent, and I'm definitely nervous. My name is Jennifer Frost, I grew up here. I have lived in this town for 55 years. I went to St. Joe's, I went to Bronxville High School, both of my children did, and had unbelievable experiences. What I have heard every year since the beginning of time is the parking isn't good, and especially at Christmas time, please support your local merchants. That's been 55 years. My mom is still in the house that I grew up in in Cedaron, so we're, we're townies. I worked for New York Presbyterian, I worked all through COVID. I did not go remote, I did not go to Florida, I worked. And thank the Lord for the restaurants that were able to pivot and be creative and encourage and keep that feeling during such an awful time. Yes, I think COVID is getting better, but what is coming out of it, what has been created here is people in urban, you know, in the Bronx, our neighbors a little bit further south, could come here, walk around outside. I applaud the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, I applaud the discussions for like creating a measured walkway across 22, that's also been talked about for forever. I think if the town is very good at holding the restaurants, forgive my bad, the restaurants to a really high standard as far as pest control, as far as cleaning up trash, what I've seen is, you said it so perfectly, my, my hospital now is on the Upper East Side, so I get on the train every morning and come back, there are tons of people in the parking lot, there's tailgating. I mean, I got off the train tonight, the, you know, the trunk is open, it's a white Mercedes, beverages, so that concerns me more. Being able to meet a friend, go to a movie, and go to Il Bacchio is magnificent to me. My kids, I work all the time, they were able to, this is a walking village, we've all said that we grew up saying it, I grew up saying it, what has been created is like a dream come true. I think it's this group's responsibility, and thank you for it, thank you for what you do, to hold everyone to the high standard. Your lighting has to be safe, your plumbing has to be safe personally. I'm not moving to Florida, I would love it if they were year-round. Everyone, every, the second grade moms were at Underhill's the other night, like, it's our school, it's our local people, and it's also, we've found a way to like have other people included that generates revenue. I think if you think about that, and not so much parking spaces, which, it's like, maybe I'm a new person trying to solve an old problem that we've talked about forever, I mean, no one's going to come here and park all day, you know, there's like, but now, they will, or, I don't know, get in the car together, or everybody takes an Uber, Metro North's doing well, take that. I have friends at the hospital who come here for SoulCycle, go to Il Bacchio, or go to Underhill's for a girls' night, and then get on Metro North and go home. I think the world of needing a parking spot all the time isn't necessarily applicable, and I think if we're smart and forward-thinking, you let them stay the way they are, but hold them to the high standard like the rest of the village. Okay.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else before, I was going to say a few words, and then I was going to propose that we, we have Jim Palmer, our village administrator here, and I think he could also be helpful at this moment, because I think what you've all been talking about is the balancing of interests. There are the interests of folks who are loving the outdoor dining, there are the interests of folks who want to park, there are the interests of the merchants who are neighbors of these restaurants, whose storefronts are now blocked a little bit by the dining, and everyone has legitimate interests. And my understanding is the village trustees met and considered all of these and came up with the guidelines that we're working with tonight, and that it's our job to, you know, make judgments sort of within those guidelines. But Jim, if you could report, you know, on sort of that discussion among the trustees, I think that'd be helpful to everyone here.
Hi, Jennifer. Hi. So to Jennifer's point, I must just say what the chamber president always says is, the village doesn't have a parking problem, it has a walking problem, because actually the village has over 1,400 parking spaces, we're blessed more than most communities, and we actually have strategic parking in the perimeter, a very short walk to the downtown. That being said, to the chairman's point, just to give everyone some background, the village board has been working on this literally almost four years to the date when COVID happened, and the restaurants needed a lifeline, the village board was there for them, and since that time has studied other communities in many respects, most respects, been at the forefront, and then even, I guess, just over a couple of years ago, did retain a professional, national firm, Street Plans, to assist the village to evaluate if we could maintain the dining on-street and what that would look like. And of course, as many of you know, the village board even did, as they always do, outreach and extended a survey to everyone to get input from the community, and it truly is very much of a balancing act, because some of the merchants won't want to say it and be at odds with other merchants, but there is a loss of parking spaces, some strategic spaces. The restaurants do block some of the facades of the other businesses, and quite frankly, it's, it's really worked well up to this point, and again, the village board has tried to be very thoughtful in getting to this point, including having the planning board also complete a review. But what we can also do is make it available, make sure it's available online, the, the design standards that the village board worked with, with Street Plans, to again, come up with a standard to, again, eventually come to the conclusion that there could be a certain level of on-street dining that could continue with that excitement, a little bit of the vibrancy in the downtown, but also making it safer, recognizing that the existing scale of the on-street dining and the, the inconsistency of this establishment is problematic, and in many instances, the dining establishments do bump into the no-parking zones, and that absolutely has been a problem. So I can tell you, I hear the positives, I absolutely get a lot of the negatives, some people emailing me telling me this is, well, it was in the survey information, actually, and the board, I think, even shared those results. But I think what got to this point is something that is workable, and a few of the restaurants have submitted thoughtful applications for your consideration, and of course, the village board appreciates your, your efforts and your diligence with it. But it's nice, once again, getting that input, so I don't know if that answers the question, but-
It's very helpful. Any questions from us for Jim before we move on to the business at hand?
And I can tell you, you know, I've been out to all these locations, I know most of the restaurant owners, the business owners or their tenants, and over the course of the four years, we've been working with them to try to make it safe. But we are at a point where it's time to recognize the skillies and also recognize the need for consistency. And the village is not alone. New York City recently came out with ironically similar guidance, and I should emphasize to those that might not, or for the viewers, but a big decision that the board grappled with was making it permanent. And at the end of the day, they decided to keep it seasonal from April 15th to November 15th, and even extended that a little bit, so April 15th and November 15th, because at the end of the day, the village owns the streets, these cannot be permanent, can't be permanent structures in the, in the right of way, and the village has to clean the streets, and so I think what you have are some applications that show they've come up with structures that can be removable and come back year after year. So anyway, just also want to add that.
Yeah, thanks so much, Jim.
One quick question, am I correct in interpreting what you're saying is that the basic balancing of the considerations raised by many of the people here about whether it should be permanent or not permanent, whether it should continue as it was or not, has been made by the Board of Trustees, and the planning board is meant to apply those guidelines and standards to each application and generally try to maintain the guidelines, or if there's an exception, you know, recognize a good reason for that.
Precisely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks so much. Why don't we keep, keep rolling? Thanks to everyone for the comments, that was really valuable. So I think we'll close the public meeting now and specifically hit the application from Il Bacchio. Any commentary from the board before we have a motion on Il Bacchio?
I think Il Bacchio has approached this, their application with a compromise and willing to reduce their space, that accomplishes some of the goals in getting back some parking. Shrinking from two to one is, I think, a material change. And I think, I look at the number of seats that they have for sidewalk dining of six today, and the number of seats they will have for on-street dining is eight, which seems like an appropriate balance. And so I think they've also made some great, their plan has some great floor, character with respect to the flooring that they're proposing, and so I think all those components come together very well.
Any other comments?
Yeah, no, I'd like to second the fact that I think that having an application that basically fits within what we're trying to do is very helpful.
Do we have a motion on Il Bacchio?
I move we approve the application.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, do we have Underhill's here with us now? Terrific. I propose we now flip back to Underhill's.
All right. Sorry, Lee. I, so, I first want to start off by thinking-
I think you need to start, sorry, just by-
Oh, identify yourself, sorry, yes.
Steven Palm, the owner of Underhill's Crossing, a tenant residing at 74 and 1/2 Palmfield Road. Maggie Marone is the architect that helped the restaurants. I think it goes without saying, Jim Palmer and to the local government of Bronxville has done an amazing job on helping hospitality get through some tough, tough times during COVID. An agreement that it is a privilege to be on-street dining, and a privilege is loved received, and I thank you for the opportunity. As a resident and a merchant, I see the pros and cons of keeping on-street dining versus not, and I understand the police department and the corporations, DPW organizations, and I feel that the continuity that Jim and Street Plans is trying to create, but alleviate a lot of what the municipalities are going through. I feel as a, as a homeowner, resident of Bronxville, the street dining has added a lot of character to our village. I think done right with all of the, the components set forth for us to do a better job, I think would clean up our act tremendously. As a merchant, my tent, or my on-street dining has been a huge win, and there are many quarters in my season that I could literally shut my interior down because the dining outside is so popular. I would agree as a homeowner and a person who lives in the village that my tent needs to come down because it's up there four years and it needs to be a little bit more structured, and I think what Maggie has gathered and working with Street Plans and their thoughts, I think that the structures that we can put up and that we will build will embellish our footprint in the village. It would be a challenge to construct on a seasonally basis, just because it just would be a lot, it would be a lot more money in addition to the fees and the financial obligations that we currently have. If we could build it into a more year-round structure would be beautiful, if not understood. I feel that if we were able to move forward with the newest plan that we put together, I think that Palmfield Road would look gorgeous, and I think that the traffic patterns wouldn't be disturbed, and we would able, I think, the village and Underhill's would profit tremendously. Ideally, leaving the footprint the way it is today would be ideal without disturbing the amount of capacity that we have, but I understand, you know, the village's perspective. And so what I have proposed is shrinking down to three parking spots and taking my capacity and bringing it to half, which is hurtful and painful, but I understand what the village is up against.
If you or Maggie could just speak to the unique aspects of the angled parking there in terms of how many spaces you need because of that, just for the public, you know.
It's three parking spaces, but it's on an angle, so he actually, like, just a 10-foot, he gains a little bit, so he's got, how much?
in terms of how many spaces you need because of that, just for the public, you know?
It's three parking spaces, but it's on an angle, so he actually, like, just a ten-foot, he, he gains a little bit. So he's got, how much, what's the total you're gonna have?
About forty, oh, forty feet.
Forty, he'll have a forty-foot space even though they're on the, because of the angle. So, which would be, if it was, um, parallel parking, it'd be two parking spaces.
Right, and if you could just touch on the challenges of trying to do this in two angled spaces? We, we're aware of it, but, yeah.
Well, I mean, he, he's, he's got to start at the very tip of the one, and he's gonna loo, it, he's lucky because on the one side, it is, um, it's a restricted zone where there's a fire hydrant, so that, there's no parking on the side. I guess that's the east.
But it's, it's a geometry problem.
Right, right.
Understood.
So will it actually, it, it encroaches on three parking spaces?
Right.
Current, it's currently four that he has.
Right. I mean, the guidelines say two parking spaces when it's angled, uh, parking. So what considerations went into you essentially asking for a variance for that?
With two angled parking spots, it wouldn't, uh, be financially beneficial to make that investment because you only have about three tables out there.
Did you, I feel like you might have given us a drawing of what it would be. And, uh, I think you'd be dining by yourself if I-
Yeah.
If I remember it, just given the nature of the spaces, yeah.
If it's two spots, we would get probably two tables. We might get maybe eight seats, maybe, maybe ten seats, maybe? And at that, at that juncture, it would not be a, a benefit for me to invest to do on-street dining. It just wouldn't, it wouldn't be a benefit.
What going, what makes it viable for you?
Three, three spots makes it viable. It cuts my capacity in half, and, um, we could manage that. And, and doing, you know, financials, you know, the first year with the investment, we would, you know, lose. But then if this is ongoing, which I, um, expressed to Jim, that I, I would need more of a guarantee that it's not just one season because it's a huge investment. And, um, it's worth it with the three spots and, and shrinking the, the footprint.
And what do you plan to do with the, um, sidewalk dining?
Sidewalk?
You have sidewalk dining all-
Oh, yeah, we're, um, we put an application in for two tables in the front of the restaurant, um, which has been the norm for us. But there's two tables in front with, with two seats that face out onto the street.
So it's more like boulevard kind of?
Right, right. They're, they're tucked up against the, uh, the restaurant. Oh, three tables? Right. Did that answer your question?
Other questions from the board? If there are no questions, why don't we open up the public meeting, see if there are any particular comments on this application?
Will we allow this one twice?
Yes. It's a different motion, or will be a different-
Maybe filibusters are permitted, I don't know, yeah, just-
Hello, again, for the record, my name is Jennifer Frost. I want to firmly and strongly, well, I got louder, reiterate, um, what I said earlier. Um, I will share that I remember when Underhills Crossing was the Alps. I don't know if anyone remembers that.
Bingo.
Then can, thank you, you can appreciate the complete, um, elevated experience that Underhills, I know, careful, I'm not, not the-
Were you an elf, Sam?
Whatever, I know, okay.
I, I miss the Alps.
Oh.
Well, I'm sure Stephen can bring back the soup with the hot dogs in it. At last, two nights ago or three nights ago, I was walking this way, so on my way home from the train, the Bronxville Elementary School's second grade moms were having their cocktail, um, kind of event there, and it looked so beautiful and flowers and, uh, all the restaurants were so generous, especially, we know, with our Bronxville school. Um, there was a time when that wasn't possible, and if you wanted to get together, you'd be like, oh, let's try this in White Plains or go up towards Lord &amp; Taylor or wherever. Now, because of this outdoor dining and this beautiful thing that's come out of a hideous time of COVID, this village came together, and it's gorgeous and desirable, and it's a destination. And it's a really nice night out that you can maybe walk into town, you have a babysitter for an hour and a half or two hours, and then you go home. It's so accessible. Our grown kids go to Pete's. Like, I grew up going to Pete's, and I'm, I work all the time, and for me to know that, my kids are older now, but for them to walk uptown and be able to have a really beautiful night, date night, whatever, their, their night is elevated because of all this outdoor dining. What I have seen, I said it earlier, that does concern me is the tailgating that I mentioned, and I can't re, like, state that strongly enough because then it gets a little, like, and I, you know, one of my high school classmates was a retired detective here, like, it gets a little tense. And so it feels to me like maybe this is clipping the wings of our businesses who we are asked every year, support your local business, support your local business. We're clipping their wings a little bit, and I think perhaps, I know you're the building, you're not the trustees, but perhaps attention, you know, picking up the trash, like you said earlier, you're so eloquent, and they're all good neighbors. Like, I feel like we need to support our businesses. And, and I'm gonna say again, I would like everybody to have the same size, not cutback, take an Uber, people take trains here, put two people in a car. I don't know the days of one person driving around looking for a spot, like, I don't know it anymore. Okay, that was it, I may or may not be back again.
Thank you, appreciate it. Looks like we also have another comment, please.
For the record, for the second time, Matt Craig, Bronxville resident. I have no financial obli, uh, ties to any of these businesses. And I've taught architectural urban planning and design to New York Institute of Technology master's candidates. Ditto, ditto, ditto. As, just talking about Underhills Crossing now, and I have reviewed every establishment's plans, I understand it, they're all a little bit different. I think the most important thing if, for a board, for a panel moving forward, if you want to, is to determine that your outdoor seating all have a consistent look for each business. That will help tie your urban center together, will make it more beautiful for others. Doesn't cost any more money to do that, that's just a stipulation. And I put it to the board, the panel, to enable these businesses to thrive. It's in everybody's best interest. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else? Jim, please.
Steve, if I could just ask, do you know if, uh, the, um, the new roof that you have, the, uh, the shades, I don't know if it's called the shades, do you know if that will, I'm assuming that'll be, the height for the shades will be a little lower than what you currently have, than what, and I think this is important, you know, because again, part of, efforts at balancing, actually, you go back to that other picture, Paul, that was good, though, where, again, the board is looking at the importance of the other businesses to be able to, you know, part of what Steve has been working on is trying to center, um, even though his, his, his business is deep. So again, each restaurant's a little bit different. His is deep, and his seating goes all the way back, but, so if you're reducing the height, I think that will also help with the bookstore's visibility, right? When, when you look at the end, you're cutting that back, it's not gonna have that, um, A-frame style, I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
I think that it's, it's cutting around about six feet from the, from the center top down, so if you look where the flaps are on the tent, right, that's where the new structure is.
It's gonna be ten feet tall at the highest point, which is gonna be consistent, and right now, it's probably about fourteen, maybe?
Got it.
And also picking up on the point that the last speaker was making, we have these, uh, suggestions from Street Plans that are guiding this, and they have very much recommended, as, as you noted, a consistency in, in look among the parties, and I think that's going to be something we'll be commenting on as we, um, go through. So I think with that, we'll close the public hearing and-
Well, no, I actually have one more question.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah. The, um, uh, structure will be within the storefronts footprint, correct? Yeah.
So it won't be in front, oh, go ahead, it won't be, it won't be in front of the bank anymore, and it will just, it's gonna be smaller on the, the Womrath side, so that will-
But it still encroaches on-
Some, a little bit, a little bit.
Encroaches on both, right? If I'm not-
Well, the other one, no, it won't be in front of the bank anymore.
How much does it encroach on Womrath?
Four feet, something like that.
Has Womrath, have the Womrath people ever said, do they come to you with any suggestions?
If we can get you back to the mic is all, thank you. Well, we know.
All right.
So we've all eaten in your establishment.
The way we manage, um, the on-street dining, uh, and, and we've done this since day one, is it's, it's a part of our footprint for our dining room. And so the maintenance program we have interior follows through the exterior. And so the bookstore, their whole frontage, Underhills frontage and the bank, we maintain that for them throughout the course of the year. So the bookstore, maintaining in a sense that we power wash their sidewalks, we plant flowers for them, we give them access to the tent prior to us opening in mid-shifts, when they wanna do a book reading or they have some type of bank event for signing. So we share our, our structure with them. And I have not fielded any complaints from either neighbor because of what we do with them. Does that make sense?
So you're, you're asking to go beyond two parking spaces and beyond the footprint of your facade?
Yes.
And, and the reasons for that are economic, essentially?
Lee? Pardon me?
Sorry.
We're, we're still in the public meeting, so if, if it's okay, if we let him just speak, that's okay.
Mark, if, again, even though I'm not a huge fan of this, I think the way to think about it is parallel parking, parking is about twenty feet long, about eight feet wide. And so when they're on an angle, he's using eight feet, eight feet, you know, eight feet, so it's really-
Twenty-four feet of frontage, yeah.
Thank you. It's four feet across the front, which would be equivalent of two parallel parking spots. So it's just, as somebody said, it's just geometry, which kicks you up to three.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's, it's one of those, on the end, if you keep going, you'll see it, the one you were on before.
Thanks, Christina.
You can see the bookstore in the background, right there, go back one. You can see where the, where the left line is. It's still gonna be in front of the bookstore.
By four feet, apparently.
I think it's an angle.
This is on an angle, so it feels like we're not really getting it. Yeah.
But one of the, the part of this, you will see the full picture, so if I can, I'll play.
Oh, so we can find that, okay. Using the magic of ball. Oh, this is the one you just, you just posted, yeah. Nice picture you took there, Christina. There was a, there was a third entry, Christina, that I remember. I'm not seeing it. Yeah. Uh-huh. Look at that. Bingo. Got it.
Obviously, that's not where it's gonna be.
Gives you feel for the structure. Okay, thank you. So it looks like it encroaches on both the bank and Womrath, no? I would expect it to, because it's a narrow storefront. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I get it. Right, they just don't have frontage. I understand. Yeah, Il Bacchio's the opposite. It's wide, but not as deep. Yeah. So perhaps we could close the public hearing, have discussion among the, among the boards. So who would like to kick us off? Okay, Albert?
I understand that they're trying to shrink it, and we might say you go four to two, but when you get to two, because they're on an angle, it's gonna look very strange, a few, a few seats. It's more of an economic reason, as you say. Um, I, I, but the design you were talking about, I like very much. Um, it's gonna make the street look great, um, and you're going from four to three spots, um, which is twenty-four feet, a little over maybe what we want, but I'm okay with the plan.
Others?
I appreciate the applicant's goal of shrinking the sizing, and I think that was clearly accomplished going from fifty-two down to twenty-six, and so I think that was a big undertaking. That being said, that's offset with the difficulty of requiring, I don't know whether we're calling it a variance or, or something outside the existing guidance with respect to taking up more than two parking spots and encroaching a little bit on other establishments. I think the package as a whole, the design is very well-made, and so balancing the reduction in seating in half, which was a big undertaking, with fitting it into and requiring a little bit ex, um, excess space around parking and frontage, I think comes to a reasonable balance that I think I could be supportive of.
Okay, any others?
Cognizant of the fact that we, um, are allowing the guidelines to be exceeded in two ways, and I just wanna make sure that we're doing it in a principled fashion. And, um, Il Bacchio fit within our guidelines, even though I think they would like to have had an additional parking space. So I'm just not sure, um, uh, I like the Underhills plan, it, you know, it's, it's better than the current one in terms of how much space it takes up and everything, but, um, is there a difference between Pond Field Road and, and Park Place that leads people to wanna grant this exception, or is it something else?
There are two things that jump out at me, I'll take a shot at that, and others may have a different view. I think Park Place, in terms of sort of parking, et cetera, is a bit more of a train wreck right now than Pond Field, and I think that's, you know, a piece of what we're talking about. I think the trustees were also encouraging a reduction from an existing footprint, and we could take the view that maybe it's unfair that Underhills had a bigger footprint than Il Bacchio, and therefore, when you ask to shrink, they're shrinking to a space that's larger than Il Bacchio. But the guidance from the trustees, I think, was very much to, you know, have it be a roughly pro-rata reduction, as opposed to every restaurant gets an assigned amount. And we can, we can adjust that, but I think that was part of the thinking.
I would just, that, that part of it also is the size, the spaces in front of Park Place, they're full-length spaces versus diagonals. So I think we should be cognizant, and I think the total, you're going from, you're having the size of the tables, right? So we have to, that, that's the, they're, they're meeting the goal there. I think it's the way the parking goes.
Hundreds of them meeting the goal there, yeah.
Yeah, the way the parking goes, it's gonna be four feet more than half or something like that. Well, if, if, if you would go from four spaces to three, but in doing that, because of the, how the way angles goes, you reduce the tables in half. So I think that part I like, that's what I like the most. And, and also, I like very much that he's doing a comprehensive, full, new look that's gonna be stellar for the area and attract a lot of, and also, the top is- that's gonna be stellar for the area and attract a lot of, and also the top is going to be, I'm assuming Walmart, you're gonna see the bookstore, you're gonna see all the things, Paul, do you agree with that? If it's 10 feet, I don't know what 10 feet does, it's...
You wish people in this town who wouldn't fit under seven feet.
Yeah, so it looks like it's 10 feet on the, on the plan. That's the top top. You know how big that, that roof on the left peak is, blocking the bookstore?
But that's not what they're gonna put up.
No, just to get an idea, what, what does 10 feet look like?
Oh, I see, right.
I'm just trying to get an idea, what, what is 10 feet, is it...
You're trying to see what the improvement is. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Paul, do you know, do you know, do you know how big, how tall the, the peaks are? Or Maggie, do you know? So you're thinking, you're thinking it's 15 feet at the peak?
It's close to that.
So it looks like, to me, it's, yes, I'm assuming you'd be able to see the, the signs.
Okay, so any other comments on this application? Do we have a motion?
I put a motion to approve the application.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks, the motion carries, good luck. Okay, our next application is from La Casa, is there someone to speak on behalf of La Casa?
Hi, I'm John Spencer Pingel, I'm the owner of La Casa Bronxville and also a fellow resident, so thank you for your service. Paul, can we start with the executive summary, just, it's like maybe five pages in? Just go forward to the executive summary, just because that has, I think... There we go. So our proposal is for a structure similar to what we have now, we believe is very attractive, and has a proven performance behind it for the last several years. It has proven to be safe and appealing dining for customers. One of the unique aspects of our situation is we are on a hill with a pretty significant incline, and so that requires some specific modifications in order to make the dining effective, so we're looking at that. We also currently have four parking spaces that we have been enjoying and are proposing a reduction of one parking space from four down to three, a reduction of seating from 40 to 24. The structure will be rebuilt to be removable and in line with the, the new guidelines that require it to be removed on November 15th. The space fits entirely within our storefront, there's no blockage of other businesses, there are no, no issues with traffic or congestion where we are, and there are no issues with parking access. We're very fortunate to have directly across the street from La Casa Bronxville, the Kensington Parking. I can tell you, because I park there almost daily, I have never not been able to get a parking space either directly on the hill above the restaurant or across the street at Kensington Parking. So it's a little bit of a simpler situation from those standpoints. Can you go to the next slide for me? Chief Satrioli had a couple of safety concerns with our location, so we had a meeting on March 8th onsite with Jim Palmer, as well as Chief Satrioli, to review the plans, and based on those discussions, we made a few adjustments to the plans, which have been incorporated. The structure's gonna be moved up the hill by 10 feet, so we'll take a look at that in the next picture. We will be moving the structure 10 inches towards the sidewalk, basically to increase the drive-through on the, on the driving lane to the left of the structure, and then there's some details relating to the base, as well as the planters on the outside, which we reviewed and agreed to. If you can go to the next slide, Paul? These are just a couple of pictures of our outdoor dining, you know, we've gotten many positive compliments on the, the aesthetics. We put a big emphasis on the flowers, which we'll be putting in shortly. To go to the next slide, this is a view from the, from the sidewalk side, which shows the, kind of the tables up there and the look from the, from the sidewalk side. On the next slide is sort of a close-up on an individual table, so if you haven't had the opportunity to dine with us, this was our solution to the incline, so each table is on its own platform, surrounded on three sides by, you know, that stabilizing force, so it's, it's a very solid structure, it's a very expensive structure, it's going to be a very expensive structure to rebuild, but we think it's essential, given the, the incline, to be able to have a dining that is safe, secure, sturdy, and again, provides a very, very nice dining experience for our diners. If you go to the next slide, this details our space, so we currently, as I said, we, we, we take up the four spaces. The proposal reduces that to three spaces, and basically, it will be reduced from both sides. This is again, one of the, one of the adjustments that was made after our meeting with, with Jim and Chief Satrioli. As I mentioned before, it fits entirely within our storefront, so our storefront basically goes to the left of the current tent and extends another 45 feet to the right of where the tent is currently. And then eventually, you get to Ernie's in the corner on Sagamore there. So if you go to the next slide, what Chief Satrioli and, and has proposed is, he wants to extend the, there's currently a commercial loading zone to, to the right there, kind of where that sign is that says, "Don't turn left," is a commercial loading zone. He wants to extend it up another 10 feet because of issues related to commercial loading in that part of Bronxville. And then on the left side, we need to provide access to the trash removal, which is directly behind the blue box there and is important for the health department. So that's basically the way the structure would fit in terms of the, the new proposal. Next slide? Yeah, I mean, that's basically it. We, you know, as, as the other applicants, we would very much prefer to have four spaces and not go down to three spaces. We would very much prefer not to have to take it all down on November 15th and put it back on, up on April 15th. So it, and, you know, and back to the economics point, it, it basically reduces our revenue by about 40 to 45% versus what it's been. Obviously, as Steve Ben has said, it's been a privilege to have it, so it's not like, you know, but the, the reality of the economics is it's a significant reduction in, in revenue, and with the seasonal nature and having to take it up and down, the costs are roughly doubling or more for us. So it's, it's, this is a proposal that still works for us from a financial standpoint. I recognize that it is larger than the guideline in terms of the two spaces versus three, we've had many conversations on this. Jim has encouraged me to put forward a plan that, that works for us and hope that, that, that you all will support it. Yeah, we've made the agreed modifications to address the safety concern, highly appealing to residents and diners, generates revenue for the village, and as many people have commented on, we believe makes a big contribution to the positive village vibe, let's say.
I think you also had a slide about bollards, you were proposing not to use the bollards.
Yeah, we went through that, I took, I had those, there was a couple of things that I went through, and then after we met with, with Jim and Chief Satrioli, we kind of found solutions that we felt good about, so I didn't have those details in here, but...
Right, if you could just tell us, yeah.
We need the, we need the planting structures to anchor the, the, the tent and the structure for wind stability. And so the plans, as they were kind of presented in terms of putting those bollards in, it, it would not, it would have, it would have affected the width of our space in a way that the, those little alcoves wouldn't have been big enough to put the tables in there.
And do the planters provide the, the safety for diners that the bollards would?
Correct, they're gonna be weighted with cement blocks, so they, they, they provide that purpose, as well as, they're gonna be weighted with cement blocks that we provide and remove, that do not involve the DPW, which was the, the important point, as I noted there. So we'll be responsible for moving those seasonally.
So just a quick question I had is, you know, our first two applicants really went with a solution that I think was consistent with, what was the name of the firm, Jim, that? Street Plans had provided, which, you know, is structural and, you know, it, it has a consistent look. So I think the, the, the plans that we've approved for Il Bacchio and Underhill's, when you come through, they will both look like they're in Bronxville and are conforming to the plans. This is a different look, and so had you considered having something that presumably it would be stepped with that kind of, you know, on solution to look like the others, is that something you'd consider?
In terms of the flooring you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about the roof line, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there were two different references that were provided. I actually was interested in, you know, it's interesting what Steve's come up with in terms of that angle, I hadn't seen that, but the, the, the short answer is it's gonna be an extremely high investment for us to rebuild the platforms. And, you know, the, the, I think the aesthetic, being white and being simple, I think does blend in, and with the emphasis on flowers, from our view, is, is consistent. There was no reference in terms of structure for a sloped surface, so there are specific, and it's, it's sloped, and it's not uniformly sloped, so...
Welcome to Bronxville.
Yeah, so what we have works, and works from a lot of different standpoints, and given the timeframe that we had to do all this, I, I felt that it was best to stick with what we know works and also looks good, and focus on the very significant job we have to do to rebuild the platforms into the new scale and to make them removable for the winter period.
Yeah, please.
Could you talk about, are you gonna rebuild, talk about the rebuilding process? Are you gonna rebuild the whole structure you built to make it fit and also able to take out?
Correct.
I don't, I didn't get that part, just explain that a little bit to me. So are you, are you...
Well, it's gonna be, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be dramatically different from an experience standpoint than what we have now, but what we built was not built to be removable.
So how do you do that?
It just, you know, it's gonna be more bolts and less screws, I guess would be the simple answer.
I was gonna say, it's a hardware problem.
Yeah.
So the same, same, same wooden?
Yeah, the same, yeah, it's, and, and, you know, the scale's different now, and the spacing's a little bit different, whatever, so it, it just, it just needs to...
And how many tables do you currently have?
We currently have 10 tables and 40 seats.
And 40 seats, right, and you're gonna go down to eight tables?
Yeah, one of the, and again, as we've, as again, I've, we've, we've had to go look, go through the numbers much more carefully now to see if this, this, this can work, but the way the configuration works with those tables is they can't be, we get a lot of people that come for two people, so we can't break that into two tables of two. So when someone comes to dine, there is two people, they sit in one of those tables. So basically, it's a combination of tables for four and tables for two, that gives 24 seats.
But you count it as 40 seats now at four per table, so you've changed the multiplier.
Right, we...
Eight by three instead of four by 10.
So you claimed reducing the capacity by 16, but, but this...
The reality is that, that while the theoretical capacity today is 40, the real capacity is 30, 30 to 32. Because we, it'd be nice if we could get 10, 10 tables to show up all in fours, but they don't. So this, this allows us to basically configure the seating to the reality of the way the space is being used. And if I were to cut it, if I was to cut to five tables and have three fours and two twos, or six tables, it just wouldn't be worth it. So I, I came with a proposal, as Jim suggested I do.
And how many tables would you be able to have if you had only two parking spaces?
Five.
And do you have the same issue that Underhill's had, that it just isn't economic at that point?
Are you going to continue, are you gonna, I shouldn't say continue, are you gonna add back your sidewalk seating?
Oh, yes, we've, we've, we've had sidewalk seating throughout, we had it before COVID, we had it during COVID. The sidewalk seating is, can you go back to the picture, Paul? So our sidewalk seats, let's see, go, go forward, go forward two more. Can you go forward two more, no, the other way, go to the right? There, yeah, there you go. So to the right of, right of that whole structure, where those alcoves are on the right side, there are three alcoves, we, we can put some tables in there, and it doesn't interfere at all with the, with the tent area or the sidewalk.
If you didn't have this structure, could you have more sidewalk seating in front of the rest?
Problem is, it's even steeper there, so it's, it's not great.
It's not terraced enough to...
I mean, well, you can't terrace the sidewalk, as far as I understood.
No, understood, though you should see what they do in San Francisco, yeah.
If you had a couple of margaritas, you might not terrace it, so, you know, it's not, it's not, let's say, if, if, if having one of those nice tables under the tent is a 10, you know, having a table on the sidewalk at a slope is probably like a 1.5, let's say. So it's just, you know, it's, it's a really nice thing, people love it, it's safe, if it rains, you know, you can finish your meal. You know, there's a lot of, to the points that were made earlier, and thank you for all the comments and support, it's, it's a very appealing dining option for people to have.
What was the 45% reduction in, did I catch that right?
Well, I'm losing, yeah, I'm losing, I'm losing, I'm losing 25% of the space, and I'm losing, how many months? Three months?
Five months a year, I think.
Four months a year, I'm losing four, I'm losing four months, and we would, I mean, I know it's, you know, we have heaters above the tables, you know, people don't dine there, I wouldn't say, in like 20-degree weather, but there've been plenty of Friday and Saturday nights when we've been full in, in February, March. I know Steve has had the same experience. So, yeah, we're losing four months, we're losing 25% of our space, it's not great, but it's still something that's beneficial to the restaurant if we can, if we can use this space. Again, doesn't, 100% within our storefront, no parking issues, no congestion issues.
Any other questions before we open up a public meeting, go ahead?
So I know that the sidewalk seating, I know, I've seen it in the alcoves, is that the only place you can really put them because of the pitch? I'm talking just the sidewalk seating, just to get a sense of what your current sidewalk seating is.
Yeah, I mean, it, there's a lot of space there, it goes, I think it's maybe 45 feet down the sidewalk there, so that's basically where we put them.
Okay, and it'd be the same as before?
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same, what do we have, 14 seats, I think?
You have seven tables at two seats each.
Yeah.
Seven.
Yeah, we can, we can put them side by side too, in the, in the alcoves.
Well, previously, Christina, you know, the, the other previous approval of the sidewalk seats, weren't they farther up?
Yeah, they were in the alcoves, they were further up.
So you, you did previously, you might not be able to have it with this size, but previously, when it was, right, is what it was. So the sidewalk dining was farther up, it wasn't in the alcoves.
Yeah, they have to have it as a two-seat, because when they double up, they do a four-seat, they don't have these.
But also the slope, we understand how it makes it more complex. Why don't we open up the public meeting, just see if there are any comments on this application? We will, we will very much keep in mind the comments that we've already gotten. With that, we'll close the public meeting and some discussion of this application. Who would like to kick us off?
Well, I think he's the same sort of spirit that we've seen from the other applicants, which is trying to work within the new parameters, reducing, but also making, so they're still financially viable for, for this applicant, so I, good job. And attractive looking, and I don't think they all have to be cookie cutter, personally, as long as they all have a nice aesthetic, which you've done a good job with, especially with the flowers.
We have asked the other applicants to reduce their capacity, and I think everyone has come in at 50%, and this is nowhere near that, it's about a 20% reduction.
In terms of an apples to apples?
Mm-hmm. So have you either reduced the capacity of the existing one or increased the capacity? So if you either reduce the capacity of the existing one or increase the capacity of the, uh, proposed one, you get a very s- small percentage reduction.
I think, I think my biggest concern is the other applicants have reduced their fit, their, um, sizing by half. And this one has not as much. And, um, it seems like we could potentially reduce the number of parking spaces from three to two as well to get into that kind of fifty percent range.
Right.
Um, so I do have some apprehension on this application. On, I appreciate all the aesthetic and the design elements. I'm worried from a goal perspective, it hasn't reduced as much as we're looking to, as I would look to target.
Other comments?
How much should we be looking at, you know, and I know that every establishment is different in terms of their, their, I don't have the right word, but the width on the street, right? So this is a much larger, um, storefront. And I, and I'm asking the question, you know, how much do we be taking that? You know, it's unfortunate that Under Hills is the way it is and it's deep as opposed to wide. This is wide and not as deep. I'm just questioning.
It's, it's, it's a balancing act, you know, and I think it's going to be up to our judgment, you know, if, if, if someone has five hundred feet of frontage, I don't think we're going to give them five hundred feet of, you know, and vice versa. If there's a deep establishment, we don't want to penalize them too much. I think we're all trying to make a judgment call, you know. Under Hills is extending beyond its
Right.
footprint. This is staying within. But I think there's also a sense, at least that I have, that, you know, um, the sheer length of what La Casa currently has, as an example, is sort of changing the aesthetic in a way that might not be really, if COVID hadn't happened, the way we would choose to design how people are, you know, um, sort of blocking up the streetscape. And so, um, you know, I think it's balancing his economics with aesthetics, et cetera. I think that's why we're here, is to think about all that. Tom, you were going to say something?
Also, is Sagamore different from Pondfield, different from Park Place?
You betcha.
Um, and, and it is, you know.
I would agree with that, that the parking situation here is nowhere near the others. And secondly, as Spencer has pointed out, there's ample parking across the street inside Kensington, is it called? Tons apart. I've parked there many times myself. Um, so people parking up the hill, I guess they're going to the, the, the medical center across the street, or maybe to the nail salon or the things down the weed. I, I, I think it's been one of the nicer designs from the beginning. It's been, you know, the wooden structure was gorgeous. I do, I do see that you reduced from four to three spaces. It's not exactly half as far as seating goes, but, um, it's, that's a reduction and in keeping with us trying to be friendly on both sides. I like it. I, I get it. I get the other comments, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak up a little just because I think the combination, because I think they go together. I think we've asked the other merchants to sacrifice more than is being done here. And I think also just visually, the amount of frontage and it's well illustrated by what Paul has on the board that we'd still have here, it's just very different than what we have elsewhere in terms of when you get off the train and you're seeing the village, what you're seeing is, is, is different. And it just feels like, you know, if this application were a tad smaller, I think it'd be easy to approve. I think at this size, it's a, it's a real question, yeah.
But I think if you went to a, a four to two spaces, it's going to be almost, it's, looking at the size of the storefront, it's going to be really, is, is it, is it not feasible, two spaces economically? Take, 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 so you're going to potentially lose the whole thing?
Yeah, Jim, you could correct me, but I thought there's a possibility of something that's a touch over two spaces.
Is there, can we do two and a half spaces? Is that? And that's why, why, why have two and a
You're currently ten, you've proposed eight. Seven's a possibility. It's a combination of things. I think it's the frontage and the parking space. I don't think it's just the
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, there is an aesthetic element too. Looks like one of them, no.
Just theoretically, Mike, Jim, would a move from eight to seven have an impact on your perspective on the application?
I, I could support five.
Sounds, sounds like the answer's no.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. It sounds like the owner's not comfortable with, uh, five. All right. So we have a couple of choices here. We can go ahead and have a motion, plus or minus. Or, Christina, we're meeting in three weeks? Right, so roughly three weeks. And so another choice that's available to the applicant would be to consult with, you know, Paul and Jim and come for final approval at the, uh, May eighth meeting and not get to final at, at this, if that would be okay with the board and if that would be okay with you. And that way the, the plan can be worked. Would that be okay with the board?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So let's, uh, let's move on to our last, um, application.
Chairman, you can have a word.
Yeah, please.
That's the beauty of having so many people here.
Excuse me, I have to excuse myself.
Fortunately, we have good forum here tonight, so always good. All right, last but not least, we have Pete's.
Yes.
Everyone, everyone here has been to Pete's.
I.
Oh, come on.
She hasn't. She told me.
How is that possible?
She thought there was a residency requirement.
Don't give her a hard time. She really helped me.
Anyway, welcome to,
Stephanie McEwen. I'm one of the owners of Pete's. Um, what everybody had said is, thank you, I, Jim, and thank Christine, because she helped me. I'm going to start with, my plans are not as glamorous. Um, I don't have an architect. About money and putting in all that, it's selling a twelve-dollar hamburger. Um, even little things like that matter. So, um, here is our plan. It is kind of drawn, but there are absolutely, um, dimensions and there are two, so we are proposing, right now we have one spot because we lost it a little while ago. Um,
But you originally had two spots, if I recall.
We had two spots. It was forty inches in length. Um, the difference between single parking and for us with the single parking is we don't have the depth to go two tables. We really only put one because we have spots that go, that go wide. So we really only, we went from, we had five tables, we went to, to two right now. Um, we are proposing to get our five tables back. We do have three we never, um, complained that when, uh, the bricks were put, whatever, that it only took two. We were just so happy and blessed that you guys were here to help us. And the shout out to also the customers and the community because that was pretty amazing. Having said, we didn't own the store at the time, but it, it wasn't, it was just by, whatever you guys are doing, it has a different. So we have the five tables. We currently have three storefronts. We do not go into the nail salon at all. We do not go into the dry cleaner at all, uh, using the two spots, which is forty, um, forty feet total. What you have as well. Um, we propose to use the balance. Exactly what was said in the thing. We propose to use the exact same planters. We want to make the town look pretty and follow whatever you guys want to do. Uh, that will make it very easy for us to take it down. It's Prohibitive for all of us. Putting down. Pizza's never been put up. Eighty, very expensive structure because again, at twelve-dollar hamburger, that really wasn't enough thing. And we do have seating So we wanted that, we wanted the open air. It was, but we never intended or wanted to put a roof line. Of course, if it's something that the planning board and that they want, we can go there, but we kind of like the fact that it's just open to the public.
Please stay in front of the mic.
I'm so loud when I'm there.
Peter's our expert on the AV. It's all good.
The echo is really loud back. Um, I, and that's kind of our, that's kind of it. We stay within, uh, the only thing I'm not ki- kind of doing by what you're asking is, is shrinking, but we never really asked for more when we, when we had the three stores in the first place.
So I'm a little confused. You've got currently, how many parking spaces do you occupy?
This is a tricky question. Currently I occupy one because, um, a little while ago, we, we went down to one.
They gave one back?
They gave, yeah.
Okay.
We, we, or we, yeah, we gave one back. Um, so, but I,
And why did you give it back?
We were asked to.
Okay, by whom?
Uh, by Jim.
Okay.
So we did, and we just rebuilt the little structure, uh, and shortened the thing. So we have
And so I think the challenge as we look at this is if we compare to Il Bacchio, um, you know, at Il Bacchio, and we love Pete's, we love Il Bacchio, don't get me wrong, but at Il Bacchio,
It's a burger. You can't live without.
It's, it's most of our diets, but if, uh, you know, if, if you contrast at Il Bacchio, they're putting up a structure that, you know, aligns with what we're seeking in terms of,
What structure aren't I putting up? Do you need a, do, I don't think it said we needed a cupboard. It required the ballards and it required the planters and, and that's what I,
Paul or Jim, could you comment on whether there was, uh, in the, in the street plans?
I don't believe it required that you have a roof.
I don't.
I don't think they need the platform. They would just need to have the, um, a handicap ramp going.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a handicap ramp, yeah.
Thanks, that's,
I may not have sketched that, but I would get it.
Okay. Okay, so there was a version in the street plans. Thanks, this is helpful.
And that's what mine would look like.
Oh, the mic is, yeah. So you were following in effect this version?
Exactly that, right.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah.
And, and with the additional place, you'll be able to do more sidewalk seating, right?
I, I renewed for what we currently have on the sidewalk and I did put in, um, for, which COVID happened when we took over the jewelry store. Um, and so we didn't do anything with this, but we did put in for extra tables in front of the jewelry store as we moved forward.
And how many tables would that be?
That would be four more.
Okay. And how many, how much more, how many more tables do you get in, uh, the, the former jewelry store?
Inside? Inside the restaurant? I have five.
Didn't we originally approve that just for, you could correct me on this. I thought that was originally approved just as a private dining?
It's a private dining.
So it still is?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Yes, I think the other thing that offhand and others can speak up that we're struggling with is Il Bacchio's taking one space. Am I remembering that? Correct? On the same crowded park place that I think we've encouraged them to go from two to one.
I, right, since I didn't, I do find, what Jen has, sorry about the thing. What Jen was saying too, I do think the parking problem, um, it's just always here. I do feel there's three parking spaces before you get to my, from me to that huge lot that nobody parks in. What do you guys call it? Garden? Three parking spots. So you have to walk three parking spots to get to that lot. So for parking for people, I feel on Park Place, um, we have a lot from, even from you guys, the other, it's right down the block. So it's, it's, I don't think,
What, what's right down the block?
The, right down, or you can go the other way, which is by Il Bacchio and go down a garden, the train, I have the train parking lot on one side and then I have the one that's down.
Some of us live across from the Garden Avenue lot, so we're very familiar.
And I just feel that those are always empty. Um, that being said, I think the parking issue is, um, is really, I don't know if it's restaurant-driven. I know that this is the whole, but, but for me and being a local and being here all the time, you just loop until you can park by Under Hill. I'm going to look for, I'm looking for Pondfield because I don't like, I don't like parallel parking. No one really wants to park on Palm, on Palmer because you parallel park. Do I want to go on the lot? Not really. So I'm just lazy, but the parking's there, you know, it, it's, the parking is, it's, it's, it's there. And for me, I'm only three spots to the, to the, to the parking lot. So I understand it. I mean, what I love about Bronxville is, um, if it's today, you can't park anywhere. But tomorrow, when it rains, you can park all over Park Place. You can pull your, your camper up and park there. It's raining. We just love nice weather. So I understand the parking, um, but I just, I agree with Jen on uh, the tailgating that's going outside and the people that, that, that sit in there and double park and sit in their cars and wait, that's a problem. Right? I don't, I don't, not sure if it's finding a spot. I loop maybe two or three, but I find one.
Yeah, I just think in the spirit of, you know, how the Board of Trustees mandated us to try to reduce the footprint of these post-COVID, I think the idea of going from two spaces to two spaces is a little bit, um, hard for us. And I think, uh, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, they may have different perspectives, but I think if this application was sitting in front of us as one rather than two, uh, it would be much easier for us to, uh, consider. So others can speak up.
So the seating you're seeking for the additional sidewalk dining in front of the newly acquired property gives you how many more seats?
How many? That would be twelve.
Okay.
For, and I'm not seeking it through the, I just renewed and tried to, you know, our, our regular, I don't know where this, the applications lie, but it gives four more tables outside.
Four more tables, okay.
Yeah.
That, you'll be back here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, and how many more tables will you get if you have?
I'll have, what we currently had for COVID was five. Now I have two.
You now have two?
I have two, when you shrink,
In the one space. It's hard to put two and a half.
When, on Park Place, for us on Park Place and on Sagamore, when you shrink the parking as you're asking and you shrink it, um, you're not going to give up half a spot. So it's just, it's literally, you have to cut in half. I can't do a, uh, I, I want to take three, I want, because we were only given two, so I have to go to two. Um, and that significantly cuts the tables because I don't have the depth of, of, I can only put one in a parking spot. It's only the width of a car. So there's two tables that go in that spot.
And you have to have the ballards around, et cetera.
And then I have to do the ballards and,
So there's two tables per parking space?
When you have the two parking spaces, you can squeeze a fifth one in there. I'm not sure what you guys had.
That's the two and a half.
Because you don't have the,
Because you don't have the ballards in between, but you missed the ballards in between.
It's more efficient to have multiple spaces.
Right. So currently, just, um, just so I understand the current situation, leaving aside how you got there.
Yeah.
You have one space with how many tables?
Two.
Two, okay. And you're going to come back to us and ask for four sidewalk tables?
Not related to the street, but yes.
Understood, okay.
And again, I think, you know, as, when, as, you know, the trustees had discussed, as Jim had discussed, I think the village is trying to balance providing some of this, you know, street space, um, to help the restaurants with having, it's not really just parking, it's circulation. Park Place, the, the good part of being on Park Place is also the bad part of being on Park Place. It's heavily trafficked. Everyone loves to walk there. Um, but it makes it very hard for, you know, vehicles to get through, let alone um, park. And I think the more that is blocked up by things, the harder it is for folks to pull in. And you end up with triple parking and what ha, it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's a, that, it's the hardest street, um, to look at.
I understand.
Please, Jim.
Are the, for once proposed, which essentially is the same five tables you have now, are these different picnic tables than the current picnic tables? Or is your proposal the same five picnic, yellow picnic tables you, you had out, the one spot?
The same five picnic tables.
You, you should know that the existing five tables can easily accommodate, again, three people on each side, so that's their potential need for. And I, my suggestion is supportive, but you should, uh, you say you suggested, understand that, and I understand they were approved for fifteen uh, patrons on the sidewalk and now will be likely requesting an amendment to that previous approval for a certain number of additional. I think you need to, you need to know what that is, where those seats would be, because it could absolutely impact where it is laid for us, which is my, my.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going to, my understanding is not be able to get to those until after, right? The sidewalk seating is going to be coming to us subsequently. So we,
Wait, 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 what was the question?
We have a sense of what's We have a sense of what's coming, but it hasn't come yet.
I'm sorry, but were you, I, I kinda missed what you said, were you saying the proximity from the picnic table to the, to the existing, I'll just...
Right, but I was just trying to, the word is, your proposal for the five tables are the same tables that you had now, not finding two spots. So, total 30, potentially more patrons, don't change. When I, when I counted that, it was based on, it's a bench, so three people sitting comfortably, you know, six had a table. But what I was just trying to explain, the word though, is you had a previous planning board approval for sidewalk dining.
Yeah.
According to our records for 15 patrons, right? My table, but there is the... Right, so now with the additional, the additional space, you're likely going to want approval from the planning board for some additional seats and or tables. I think they would need to know where those additional seats and tables are, what the layout is of those relative to this proposed site plan, because you're going to have waitresses entering and exiting. So, in this case, I think the on-street dining, the on-street dining is also relevant to what's proposed with the sidewalk, because it's already significant, the previous planning board approval for this site for sidewalk dining of 15 patrons is larger than most of the other establishments.
And that is for the two spaces or the one?
No, the 15 patrons is for the sidewalk.
It's for the sidewalk. Fine, okay, sorry.
So, the two are separate, but I remember when we were in the office, you had, you had, but I had, was submitting for the sidewalk, but was, I don't have those pictures with me right now, but I did have that proposal going in with this, showing where the tables were, but since they are regular, already renewable tables, Jim, we were in the office when we mentioned this, so I didn't draw them in because we had a conversation in the hallway about it being separate, so I apologize for that, but I, because I did have them. Where they do go, is there small tables? And so, can I actually correct if Christina, you had mentioned that when...
Well, you have previously...
It's this, it's this...
I thought, this was your previous...
Okay, so, but then I just wanna, for a second, I will not be, I will not be submitting for four extra tables. When I asked Jim and Christina, how many tables I had was approved for last time, you had said four and 12, and now you're telling me five and, and five.
The second time, you said, I love you, it's actually five.
Okay, so I'm not asking to, to add, I'm not asking to add four tables, I'm asking, in the future planning board, it will be adding three since I already had approval for four. I had gone and we were pulling this, but I guess it, we, we didn't have the right information. That being said, they're small round tables, they have more than, more than enough feet to the, to the sidewalk, so I don't see them being a problem for the sidewalk seating.
Do you, this is like asking which of your children you like better, um, do you prefer your sidewalk setup or the on-street?
I think all of us have to, there's no guidelines as to how long this is going to be in play, just like everybody's mentioned, putting the cost into the street dining isn't in everybody's...
All things being equal, sidewalk is better.
It's not in everybody's best interest if it's gonna just go away next year. So, yes, and of cour, and it's, it's, you know, it's right under our awning and it's been there for years, so I appreciate that.
Nice place to sit, too.
So, do you need to make, you know, the, the other applicants, two of them especially, are making a, a big investment, and I understand the economics are different, but do you, are you, would you need to make a big investment?
This will be a big investment either way, I think, for any of us, but yes, especially selling $12 hamburgers. That's why it would just, the ballards itself are pretty expensive and the planters are very expensive.
And you don't own those right now?
I don't think any of us own that, that's what's required by the town, no.
But you would just be putting back what you had, is that what you're asking?
I don't think that's allowed. Well, table-wise, yes, but I would be doing what you're asking with the ballards and the planters.
Yeah, I'm talking, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and again, I'm sort of more in favor of people having bigger, but everyone is being asked to reduce a little bit. That's my only comment. I mean, you went from two to one, now you have one, I haven't been there in a couple weeks, so...
We've had one for the couple months.
Okay. And you're asking to get the second one back, and everyone else is...
If you will.
No, but everyone, everyone here is, everyone else is, everyone else is having a reduction in plan, that's, you know, that's, so, it's a, you're asking the opposite question.
I understand, but nobody else was asked to reduce in the middle of the thing either, so I was just...
No, we're not referring to the one, we're referring to the two.
Yeah, that's sort of confusing to me, is why you, you did it before this.
Because Jim asked me...
Like, if you would've come to us instead of going from two to one...
I don't wanna penalize her for being cooperative with Jim, so let's, let's use the two as our reference, but having said two, two equals two, and it isn't a, a change. So, if we, if we anchor on that, and I think what we prefer is, you know, in general, for the applicants to come in with, you know, what would be realistic, rather than asking for the moon. You know, it, I think that's, you know, because, oh, we don't have the power to change your plan, we have the power to say no, or the power to say yes, that's all we can do. And so, you'll have to decide whether you wanna put forward a plan with two. That, that comes down to you.
I would be careful with that one.
Yeah, so, I guess I will...
I think maybe you wanna, you wanna, you wanna come, you wanna...
Come back with La Casa next year.
I, I think we'd propose that you...
Better plans and some ideas, you know, just the whole...
If you could ask me for more, I did put a picture with the planters and the ballards, but I think Christina doesn't wanna show it because it's probably so embarrassing.
That's okay.
I have the architect, there, there we go.
There's nothing wrong.
There is. Nice job, John. Did you do that?
I did.
I think the artwork is good.
Very nice.
Yes, yes.
Um, again, again, what we're doing is we're shrinking, we're going smaller, spending more money on architects and people that actually can do this.
There's some folks in the audience here perfectly in favor of spending money on architects, but...
I hope no one watches this video.
In any case, so what we're throwing out there, if it's okay with you, is if you could come back with La Casa and we could hopefully get things done quickly, because the season's coming and we understand times are wasting and you, you wanna minimize how much of the season you lose as you're doing this, so we'd, we'd like to try to, you know, work with you quickly. And the date again, Christina, for that?
Uh, maybe, maybe. Sure.
So, if that'd be okay with you, I think consensus is, that would be good?
Yeah, I will give this admission, it'll be in the 26th.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, Albert.
Just a general question, maybe more to Jim, is I'm sort of getting a sense, and please, if I'm wrong, is there a concern with the restaurant owners that this is gonna completely go away, the outdoor seating, is that what you're sort of hinting at, that you don't wanna put the investment in and a year from now, we say no more street, on street dining?
Well, for me, I think, one, I, we don't, again, I'm going down to our menu, it's, we don't, we're pretty inexpensive to begin with, but...
No, but I mean, more, do, are you, are you guys nervous?
But this will be, this will be a big undertaking to have those, and it's storage and it's, I mean, if you want everything taken down.
No, I'm just saying that, that, I'm, maybe I'm just getting the wrong sense of it, but we're, the proposal from the town is to sort of reduce, but then that's fine for a while, right, Jim? We're not gonna be next year saying...
We wouldn't, but the board of trustees hold...
They always have that right.
I think the board is absolutely going to take into account that, yes, the ballards are expensive.
Right.
I think the ballards themselves, any of those stands, I think, are priced at $1,000. So, yes, I think the board's gonna take all that into...
Yeah, we don't wanna make, them do all these things and a year from now, that would be, that would be awful.
I also think we have a number of folks here in the audience who will be showing up at the trustees' meeting if, they, they consider changing policy.
You can tell them it's still full.
So, it's, uh...
Right, I would agree with that, but I'm...
But also, if they choose to get rid of on-street dining, so there, there are folks with strong opinions in this town and they know how to express them, that's all to the, all to the good.
Please.
No, I'm done.
I was gonna say, in terms of the resubmission, too, it would very much help me to understand the relationship of the, uh, street dining to, and the sidewalk dining in terms of the renewal and then the potential new application to fill in the space where the jewelry store used to be.
So, a drawing that would show everything?
Yeah.
I can, I'll just bring the pictures that we're, that will be in that planning board there, too. So, so is there, just so then I know, is there, does the, does the outside seating or does, the numbers of seats that I have on sidewalk affect the street, how, how does that all go with your guys' opinions?
Right, there's nothing in our guidelines...
Right, that's why I'm asking.
...that has those two balanced off. But just speaking for myself as one of the members, I do think if you were to expand your sidewalk dining, I would be less sympathetic to an application for on-street dining, just to put the cards on the table.
We were talking about this a little bit with La Casa. If La Casa had the availability to magically have its level go flat and fill in with, you know, sidewalk tables the whole way, he probably would prefer it because it's permanent, as you were saying, and we might have a different perspective on how much on-street to provide. He can't make the outside flat, you can. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to think about all of that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for coming out and any other business, if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, everyone.